I hear my call to order this public hearing of the Board of Education for Willmet Public Schools, District 39 for Monday, March 16th, 2020, and the time is seven o'clock. Will the clerk please call the roll? Here.
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 Great. Lisa, could you put the microphone a little closer to your mouth?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I'd like to ask Dr. Krim Skolli to discuss the resolution to adopt e-learning program in lieu of the district's scheduled emergency days.
Happy to. According to Section 10-20.56 of the school code, school districts may, by adopted resolution, utilize e-learning days in lieu of emergency days. As of today, the number of e-learning days may not exceed the number of emergency days in the approved school calendar, although we do expect that there will be some revisions to this in the near future. We did submit our plan to the Regional Office of Education for verification. However, we did want to proceed with the requirements of a hearing this evening and asked the Board to officially approve the proposed e-learning plan. If approved, this will permit students' instruction to be received electronically while students are not physically present in lieu of the district's scheduled emergency days. Again, I need to emphasize things are changing moment by moment, and we do expect some additional direction and possibly an extension of these e-learning days pending ISB direction and guidance at this point. They're also making some adjustments to what is currently the requirements of the e-learning plans. But in order to be as proactive as possible, the district developed this plan and has put it into place, and our teachers are doing an outstanding job of making every effort to implement the spirit of it. So our e-learning plan will be valid for a three-year term once approved, and so we respectfully recommend approval of this e-learning plan. And tonight, there is a public hearing for the purpose of the approval, and then we do have a recommendation later on this evening's agenda. So this really is the opportunity for a public hearing.
Great. And so given this is a public hearing, it is now time for public comments. This is an opportunity for the audience to address the Board. Are there any audience members that would like to speak at this time? If so, please address the Board. I must remind guests to state your name and community of residence, and by Board directive, you are allowed three minutes to address the Board.
Hi. My name is Kimberly Newman, and I am the Ramona Elementary School PTA president this year. I would like to thank you for the decision you made at the last board meeting to allocate some funding within next year's budget towards helping us replace our aging school playground. Our community is very grateful. We appreciate that you took the time to hear the reasons why Ramona has such a great need. To briefly summarize to our community, Ramona's student population has increased by over 100 students since when our current playground was installed over 25 years ago. Ramona's playground also houses the Early Childhood Program for the district, which is a big part of the Summer Enrichment Program, housed at Ramona every summer and serves the entire community's children. And most critical, Ramona has more children with special needs than the other Willmet elementary schools, making innovative and purposeful equipment a crucial necessity for inclusion during recess. I want you to know that we were very careful to review playground, to only review playground options that we felt were monetarily feasible in our community, given a three-year fundraising timeline. We looked at three companies choosing equipment that could best serve our 525 students and overall community population, given specific learning needs and accommodations. Our Playground Evaluation Committee, made up of teachers, occupational therapists, learning behavior specialists, and parents, set internal standards that each piece of equipment would have multiple ways to play to maximize excitement. As you know, we are in year two of a three-year fundraising campaign. We made approximately $30,000 last year and are pleased to announce that we raised $24,000 at our 10th Annual Ramona Benefit this past February. We incorporated an aggressive fundraising strategy this year and are on track to exceed our $30,000 goal despite any threat of school closing for coronavirus safety. The past two years of fundraising results are even more impressive when you take into account that, on average, Ramona raises about $15,000 a year. We really appreciate that you listened to our petition on behalf of all D-39 schools, that our school board help us out in times when we undertake a large-scale school improvement project that may require years of fundraising. We are humbled by your contribution and willingness to assist, making Ramona the first of the D-39 schools to benefit from your intrepid decision. We can't wait to start planning the installation of our chosen new toys design and look forward to inviting all of you to the ribbon cutting ceremony. Thank you again for your support.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the Board? I think none, we will continue with the agenda. Board members, do you have any questions or comments about the e-learning program?
I do. I just want to say that I want to thank staff for the unbelievable effort that it has taken to put this program in operation in record time. My daughter was at her iPad all day doing e-learning, and for that, and for all the other students in the district, I am eternally grateful. I don't, I know that this was a very heavy lift, and I speak for the entire Board when I say, thank you to one and all.
Hey Lisa, John, can I add to what you were saying?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. It's very impressive. The kids were all working today, and they were pretty busy. But I wanted to say also, I have a lot of friends who have kids in other districts who aren't nearly as fortunate as we are in our ability to launch that program in such short notice. So it's very, very impressive. Thank you.
Other questions or comments?
I just have to add that in addition, I want to express my thanks, and also the work that my kids were doing was really meaningful. It was not busy work. It was relevant to what they had already been studying. It was totally appropriate to their grade level, and they can't wait to go back at it tomorrow, and that, as a former teacher, feels really hard to have pulled off. So I'm very grateful and appreciative.
I'll go one step further. I did listen to both the pledge of allegiance, which was touching, and also the introduction and explanation of the virus and why children were doing e-learning. It was very well done. Like, all of it was very well done. We could keep going, and we will.
I will give you one more, which is maybe a shout-out to the Technology Department for having set this all up. I was amazed to learn that we sent all of the 1 through 4 graders home with one-to-one devices. How we pulled that off on a Thursday afternoon, I have no idea, but I'm very impressed. So just a quick add-on shout-out for technology.
And I would like to do an add-on for Special Education Student Services, which I know is really difficult to support during this time, but somehow the LBSs were there today. I know it's a rocky road, and it's going to be a rocky road. It's tough. But they were there, and they're answering questions, and the speech therapists and people were sending out their letters, and I was blown away by the organization in, once again, in such short time. It's incredible that you were all able to pull this together, and I can't wait to see how it gels over, you know, and if you did this on the first day, I'm just amazed. So thank you so much.
Anyone else? I don't want to shortchange the district team for more.
I will simply say, I can echo everything the Board has said and so much more. This has been a huge commitment of time and effort by each of our administrators and all of our teachers and certified staff and everyone who supports them. I am incredibly impressed by the work that has been accomplished in such a really short amount of time in unprecedented challenges, and the care and commitment, dedication to our students is unparalleled. And just, I have a little report I will share later on in the agenda if I have the opportunity, but truly inspiring work by our teachers who are going above and beyond in service to our students and our community at this point.
Great. With that, I seek a motion to adjourn to the regular meeting of the District 39 Board of Education.
I move to adjourn to the regular meeting of the Board of Education.
May I have a second?
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded, all those in favor of adjournment, please indicate by saying yea.
Yea.
Motion is by general consent, and the time is 7:11. Just because it's fun to do. I hear my call to order the regular meeting of this Board of Education for Willmet School District 39, Monday, March 16th, 2020. Will the clerk please call the roll? Here.
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 Great. Principal Erin Dunbrow will introduce a video of Harper 3rd grade students and their siblings who will lead the pledge.
Hello. I am Mr. Dubno, the principal here at Harper, and I got three awesome 3rd graders who are going to help talk about our exciting week last week that we called our Ability Awareness Week.
Hi, I'm Isla.
Hi, I'm Angie.
Hi, I'm Kinsley.
This past week was really exciting and important. We got Harper as we continued our focus on differences and welcoming of all to help us with programming, education, outside the lines this year.
The goal was to provide insights about disabilities to increase acceptance, understanding, and inclusion by demystifying disabilities and amplifying abilities. Each grade level has a specific focus under the theme of ability awareness and inclusion.
Kindergarten, we all are alike, and we are all different. First grade, helping tools. Second grade, disabilities. Third grade, deafness and blindness. Fourth grade, physical disabilities.
One thing I learned was people in wheelchairs can do anything, they just do it a little differently.
One thing I learned was how important service dogs are to people that are blind, and that service dogs can even retire sometimes.
One thing I learned was how important sign language is for communicating.
Stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The artwork on display this month in the boardroom is a wonderful sampling of 1st through 8th grade student work. Every March, we observe Youth Art Month by showcasing the talented student artwork created across the district. Youth Art Month emphasizes the value of arts education for all children and encourages quality school programming. I just want to take a second and explain how we're going to change this evening's board meeting. This is an unprecedented time, an unprecedented public health crisis, whereas Dr. Krim Skolli has said, guidance from the CDC and other officials changes at times by the hour, sometimes even faster. And, you know, we tonight have to make some decisions about weighing the importance of the Open Meetings Act and doing business with the latest CDC guidance, which has stated that less than, gathering should be less than 10 people. And as, if you do the math, we're one over. And I think that we'd all be more comfortable outside the public domain. And so with that, we're going to change, we've got the six feet of separation, and we've tried to do the best we can under these circumstances to make sure that the Board gets done the business of the district in a timely and responsible way. But what I'd like to recommend to board members this evening is that for nonessential business, reports, committee reports, we go ahead and submit those reports to Dr. Krim Skolli, and as soon as time permits, she will post everyone's board reports online. And that what I will do is this evening, I will go through the agenda and ask if there's anything pressing that needs to be stated, and if not, we will move to the next agenda item, understanding that there are some things that we do need to talk about, this e-learning, Dr. Krim Skolli, you've talked about, and other kind of things in the agenda, and we do need to get through kind of the consent agenda, to the extent board members feel comfortable with that. Is that an okay way to proceed, board members? Those on the phone?
Yes.
Okay, terrific. One thing we will not do is get rid of public comment. Is there anyone who would like to? Oh, sorry, thank you Frank. I seek a motion to approve the February 24th, 2020 Board of Education and Executive Session Minutes and the minutes from the March 9th, 2020 Special Meeting.
I move to approve the February 24th, 2020 Board of Education and Executive Session Minutes and the minutes of the March 9th, 2020 Special Meeting.
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded, board members, are there any comments, errors, or omissions to the minutes? If not, all those in favor of approving the minutes as submitted, please indicate by saying yea.
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 Wait, sorry, board members on the phone, if I speed through too quickly and you actually wanted to make a comment, I will backtrack. I'm not used to having the delay and also just not being able to see you. So apologies in advance.
They're all good.
Okay, great.
Yeah, it's all good, Lisa. Yeah, no biggie.
Circling back to public comment, is there anybody in the audience who would like to address the Board at this time? Not, we will proceed with our agenda. So I'm going to, like I said, go through quickly board reports. If there's anything board members would like to report on, go ahead, and if not, we will go ahead and submit your reports to Dr. Krim Skolli. Facility development, Ms. Sternwiler.
It can be, it can be posted.
Great, thank you. School finance, Mr. Caesaretti.
Yeah, agree. This could be posted. Thank you.
Yep, strategy, Mr. Steen.
Post it.
Thank you very much. Community Review Committee, Ms. Stone.
I will post it.
Willmet Community Special Education Wiki, Dr. Swanson.
Or any report?
Great.
I can post that as well.
Terrific. Illinois Association of School Boards, Ms. Sternwiler.
I'm going to post most of it, but I want to make one point. I'm sure everyone is aware of, but today Governor Pritzker issued the executive order that included suspending the in-person attendance requirement by members of public bodies, including boards of education. So that big change just came out, came today. Carrie, did you already mention that or go through that? I couldn't.
I have not.
Do you want me to continue with this, or do you want me to post it?
I think you can post it.
Okay, I'll post it.
Thank you.
I'm good then.
Thank you for that. As I said earlier, things change at the speed of light these days.
Yes, thank you.
Legislative update, Ms. Stone.
I will post it.
Great. Now we're going to go to information items. Dr. Krim Skolli, written communication.
There are no written communications to report. I will provide a brief update of our administrative hiring, mostly because we have a member who is joining us remotely. We have been working diligently through the interviews and the rigorous selection process for our new principal at Willmet Junior High School. I'd like to thank the many stakeholders, including administrators, teachers, parents, and our faculty and staff who have been involved throughout the process, and I am very happy to share with you that we have completed our final rounds of interviews and done reference checks, and I'm honored to recommend the finalist to the Board this evening, Catherine, who goes by Kate Dominique, will be recommended to the Board this evening. We had a really strong candidate pool for this position, and I am thrilled to be able to recommend Kate to you this evening. Kate is joining us remotely from San Diego, where she currently serves as a middle school principal in San Diego, and we are absolutely thrilled to have Kate joining us this evening.
Good evening. It's so nice to meet you all remotely. I was told, I was told I'm echoing, so I apologize that you're hearing me twice. I'm very excited to join Willmet School District. The job caught my attention at the beginning because of the grade level. I'm one of those, sometimes people call us unique people that love middle school. And so I was previously a 7th and 8th grade English teacher in San Diego, and I was also a vice principal at a 5, 6, separate from a 7, 8, with the sole purpose of aligning curriculum across those four grade levels. So that was the original reason that I applied for the Willmet Junior High School principal position. But through this multi-interview process, I came to just admire the work you're doing. In my tour of Willmet Junior High School, it was clear that your work is 100% student-centered, that it is about young people. In meeting the parents and the community members on the interview panel, it was clear that your community is very intertwined with the schools, which I think is critical for student growth. And I love that you're forward-thinking. We're not just preparing students for tomorrow, but what's going to happen when they graduate high school, and will they be successful when they enter the career field? So just everything from my first interview with the superintendent to my final interview with two panels of 13 people each, I walked away very excited at the possibility of joining Willmet School District, so I'm just very excited. Thank you for the opportunity.
We're excited that you're going to join the team, and we look forward to meeting you on, in brighter days.
Yes. Agreed, agreed. Thank you for letting me join remotely. I really appreciate it.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you. So I can share the rest of the kind of background information on Kate with the Board and include it in our report as well, but as I said, we are thrilled. Her references came back outstanding, and every person who met her really had wonderful things to say about her and the work she is doing, so we're thrilled to have her joining our team. We feel very lucky in that regard. We have also proceeded with our interviews and posting for other administrative positions, and so we are making good progress in all respects. We are temporarily on hold until we can resume some of those other activities.
I just want to say it's impressive that you got the hire done during these times, that you were able to keep your eye on that ball.
Thank you. Yes, we are, we are busy, busy people. The other update I did want to share is about our healthy schools preparedness. We continue to continuously monitor and stay apprised of all situational awareness and guidance provided by the world health experts, the CDC, our Illinois Department of Public Health, as well as those provided by the Illinois State Board of Education. I have to tell you, when we made the decision on Thursday to close school, that was a really, really tough decision to make, especially at the hour and time at which we were trying to make that decision. I, at this point, could not be more proud of the leadership shown by my entire Nutria leadership team, our partners in other districts, to be able to not only make this decision, but to remain committed to supporting our students and our teachers throughout these unprecedented times. There are many districts who, recognizing that ISB has needed to shift their guidance again and again. Some districts are putting on hold the services that they can provide to students, and I could not be more proud that, not only in Willmet, but throughout the Nutria Township, we are continuing to stay strong with the services that we are providing to our students and the supports that we're providing to our staff, yet recognizing and supporting remote work habits as well. And so this is a really difficult time, and there is a lot of balance being provided. We shared an update with our staff today. We also just recently sent an update out to our families, so I will not reiterate that beyond simply saying at this point, we had an outstanding day of e-learning today as our first launch, and we expect to continue through this week as we have planned. We will continue to have e-learning each and every day. We will continue to support our students in that regard, and we believe very strongly that the connections in the community, although remotely provided, are really critically important to our students and to our families, as well as to our teachers at this point. So I could not be more proud of the work that we are doing and the supports that we're providing. We understand everyone needs flexibility and probably more flexibility than we even had anticipated when we developed these plans. We are fully committed to remaining flexible for our staff and for our students and families, but again, we feel it is very important to continue to provide that kind of support and community that is so important in difficult times. And so, again, And so, again, I, I had a conversation today with our union leadership for our teachers' union, they were very willing to partner and collaborate, and willing to support us collectively in providing these ongoing supports, and so, again, I, I just, I can't say enough about the incredible work of all of the teachers, administrators, and staff in this district on behalf of our community, so thank you.
I just wanna, um, again, state our thanks and recognition of everything that you've stated, um, as well as say that I understand as ISB rolls out regulations and guidance fast and furiously, not all of that guidance might be helpful, and so in those areas where advocacy is needed, I think I speak for the entire board, that we would be willing to advocate with ISB on the district's behalf to get some of the additional needed flexibility that you might require.
I had a quick one, and I think it falls in here, and you can answer it quickly or postpone it, but, um, could you mention briefly what the plans are for the elections tomorrow?
Yes, we are a, um, a voting site here, a polling place. None of our schools were scheduled to be polling places this year, thankfully, due to the really hard work, dedicated work by Tony DiMonte to make sure that our schools were not polling places, um, for this year. This location that we're currently in is a polling place, and will, will continue and proceed accordingly, so we have made arrangements, our office will be closed to everything except essential functions tomorrow, there will be an administrator on site, but otherwise the office is, is really only open to the election staff.
Do you have plans for like cleaning afterwards then? Cause a lot of public will be coming.
Yep, we do, our custodial staff will do a deep cleaning afterwards, yes, thank you.
Okay, are there other things you would like to review on the administrative announcements?
I will simply say, we had a great celebration of Go Green Willmett, of the Ramona International Day, and the Mackenzie Variety Show, all outstanding events for our community, some needed to be cut short, and again, I would commend everyone for their understanding and flexibility despite those limited opportunities, or, or the limitations placed on some of those opportunities. Uh, I would echo that for so many of our student activities right now that unfortunately are being canceled or postponed. We had students planning and, and well-prepared for a wonderful show and performance at WJHS, we had students going to the Science Olympiad who had earned their spots there, students performing, um, or competing, excuse me, in the wrestling competition that should've occurred, volleyball games were needing to be canceled, so there are so many lost opportunities, and again, I think it is in the best interest of our community and, and world health, health at large, that we postpone and, and make these arrangements, but that doesn't stop us all from feeling saddened for our students who are missing opportunities.
Should we move on to the strategic plan updates?
Oh, we certainly can. One other just quick mention, this, the spring academic assessments, we had scheduled those, they are on hold at this point, we are expecting additional updates to come from the state board. Uh, we don't have any FOIAs to report, and so the strategic plan update, if I may, just, Katie is here, she was prepared to make a report, that report has already been submitted in, in narrative format to the board, and so unless the board has specific questions, we can, we can simply proceed with that report as it's been provided to the board.
Board members, how would you like to proceed? Are we okay with written? Okay, then let, that takes us to annual business. Oh, sorry, go ahead, on the phone?
No, I was just saying it's okay.
Okay, then we'll move on to annual business, Dr. Krim Skolli.
Uh, yes, it, first up is the resolution providing the issue of not to exceed 11,600,000 general obligation limited tax school bonds, um, and I will pause there simply to say that the parameters, bond resolution authorizes the district to issue an amount not to exceed 11.6 million dollars in general obligation limited tax school bonds, Series 2020, which includes 5 million dollars of proceeds for working cash to fund capital projects and up to 6,600,000 for the purpose of refunding the outstanding Series 2010 bonds. Present value savings currently estimated to be at about 477,000 dollars, just over that. This was discussed in detail at our co, at our Committee of the Whole meeting last week, and has been discussed by the board extensively at previous meetings as well. Ellen has a brief update on this report.
Yeah, thank you, um, I just wanted to let you know that I talked with Elizabeth Hennessy, our municipal advisor from Raymond James this morning, given everything that's going on with the market and the interest rates. I was expecting to hear that we'd be in really good shape, that the interest rates were down, with the treasury rates down, and all the rest of the interest rates, however, the municipal bonds rate are actually increasing, she said basically everybody that had been investing in bonds is selling them off, so the interest rates are going up, so instead of the plan that we discussed at the Committee of the Whole to go out for the competitive bids next week, we're gonna put that on hold. The resolution that you have to approve tonight gives us, gives us authority to, um, go out for the competitive bid on the bonds for a six-month window, so we will keep you updated as we go, and we'll delay, and, and hopefully the market should correct itself, um, so we'll just wait and see, and I, it should be fine. Any questions?
I would just say, I think there's a lot of wisdom in that, thank you for, you know, keeping track of it and doing the right thing.
Yeah, I agree, that's a, a good call.
Student transportation contract extension at the end of this school year, we will have completed a three-year contract with North Shore Transit for our regular transportation services, we're recommending extending the contract through fiscal year 2022. The board discussed this again, um, at the Committee of the Whole meeting, Ellen could certainly answer any questions if board members have any.
Board members, are there any questions? I know we've discussed this at the committee meeting, okay?
Uh, the next item is authorized depositories, investment managers, dealers, and brokers, and according to Board Policy 4:30, um, there's a requirement that the board annually review the district's investment objectives, as well as annually approve a list of authorized depositories, investment managers, dealers, and brokers, and again, we did discuss this at the Committee of the Whole meeting, but if there's any questions or a desire for Ellen to provide some additional background, we can certainly do that.
Board members, on the phone, good? Okay?
Good.
Yes.
All right, the next up then is Summer 2020 High Crest and Health Life Safety Construction Project bids. We had the bid opening for the Summer 2020 High Crest and Health Life Safety Construction Project bids on March 12th, we had plenty of qualified bidders, and the bids came in less than estimated. Ellen has additional information if you would like, I don't think this is something we talked about as lengthy as, maybe you could provide some additional information?
I need about two sentences?
Great, thank you.
I would do it quickly, so like Carrie said, um, the bids, uh, we had a lot of responsive bidders, the construction cost came in at 2.1 million with total estimated cost at 2.6 million with the architect and construction management fees, so the total project costs are coming in 354,000 dollars, less than the previous budget estimate, which was running around 300,000 dollars over what was in the projections, so the net effect is the bid came in about 45,000 dollars under what we had in the projections, so we're pretty much back on target, so we're recommending that for approval tonight. Any questions?
Next up is the Board Policy Review, uh, recommended for first reading this evening are several of our board policies. As shared last Friday, there are nine new policies for first read this month, feedback regarding these policies would be appreciated by the board by February, March 20th, to allow time for revisions and edits prior to the April Board Meeting. Happy to take any feedback right now if there is any.
Board members, is there any discussion on these policies?
I have one question, um, in policy 8:30, 8:30, um, under enforcement, this is at the bottom of one of our pages, there's not a page, oh, it says page three of four at the top. It says, "Any staff member may request identification from any person on school property, refusal to provide such information is a criminal act." When we, when people check into our buildings, do they give their license over, and then they get a badge, right? So I'm just thinking this all predated that practice, so if I give over my license, and then someone later in the building asks to see my ID?
You would show your badge from the school?
Okay.
But I will look into that and ask Heather to make sure that that's, uh, very clear.
Okay.
Other comments or questions on board policies? Okay, then we will move on to public comment. This is another opportunity for the audience to address the board, are there any audience members that would like to speak at this time? We will continue with our agenda. The next order of business is the consent agenda under the action items. Are there any items that the board would like pulled from the consent agenda? Folks on the phone, I just wanna make sure you heard what we were?
No.
Okay. Mr. Panzico, will you please proceed?
I move to approve the personnel report dated March 16, 2020. I move to approve the resolution authorizing the honorable dismissal, non-renewal of teachers. Move to approve the two-year extension of the regular student transportation contract with North Shore Transit NST. The pricing for fiscal year 21 includes a 4% increase, and the pricing for fiscal year 22 includes a 4 and 1/4% increase as indicated on the attached schedule. I move to approve the following authorized depositories, investment managers, dealers, and brokers, North Shore Community Bank and Trust Company, PMA Financial Network LLC, and the Illinois School District Liquid Asset Fund Plus. I move to approve the award of the base bid package in the amount for, amount of 2,142,500 per bid specifications for the Summer 2020 High Crest and Health Life Safety Construction Project bids. Following detail, RB Construction for an amount not to exceed 650,000, Ellen's and Mackens Roofing for an amount not to exceed 44,800, Monarch Construction for an amount not to exceed 4,000, 410,000, Hartwood Plumbing Heating for an amount not to exceed 652,700, Shoreline Electric Company for an amount not to exceed 385,000, for a total project cost I move to approve as first reading of the Board of Education Policies 8:10, Communications with the Public, 8:20, Community Use of School Facilities, 8:25, Advertising and Distribution of Literature and Other Material by Non-School Entities, 8:30, Visitors to and Conduct on School Property and Community Use of Buildings, 8:70, Accommodating Individuals with Disabilities, 8:80, Gifts to the District, 8:90, Parent Organizations, 8:95, Community Review Committee, and 8:100, Relations with Other Organizations and Agencies. I move to approve the accounts payable for bills listed between February 25, 2020 and March 16, 2020 in the following amounts, Educational Fund, 523,173.77, O&amp;M Fund, 163,293.28, Transportation Fund, 180,484.70, Capital Projects, 88,760, for total all funds of 955,711.75. I move to approve the manual checks issued between February 25, 2020 and March 16, 2020 in the following amounts, Educational Fund, 554,750.18, O&amp;M Fund, 3,396.27, Transportation Fund, 17.73, Tort Fund, 1,251, for total all funds of 559,415.18.
May I have a second?
Second.
The motion having been made and seconded, would the clerk please call the roll?
Sorry, can I just make a clarification, that being, um, the motion to approve the attached resolution authorizing honorable dismissal and non-renewal of teachers, uh, under the exhibits, it indicates that the Exhibit A or Exhibit A1 or A2 will be delivered by personal delivery, because of the health crisis at this point, uh, that will be delivered by first-class mail and certified mail instead, staff are not in our buildings, so that personal delivery is not possible.
The motion having been made and seconded, would the clerk please call the roll?
Johnsons, ready?
Yes.
Yes.
Amy Faly?
Yes.
Mark Steen?
Yes.
Ellen Sternwiler?
Yes.
Darren Stone?
Yes.
Mrs. Schneiderfett?
Yes. The yeas have it, motion carried, carried. Um, I seek a motion to approve the bond resolution.
I move to adopt the attached resolution providing for the issue of not to exceed 11,600,000 dollar general obligation limited tax school bonds, Series 2020, of the district for purposes of increasing the working cash fund of the district and refunding outstanding bonds of the district, providing for the levy of a direct annual tax to pay the principal and interest on said bonds, and authorizing the proposed sale of said bonds to the purchaser thereof.
May I have a second?
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded, would the clerk please call the roll?
Johnsons, ready?
Yes.
Frank Panzico?
Yes.
Amy Faly?
Yes.
Mark Steen?
Yes.
Ellen Sternwiler?
Yes.
Darren Stone?
Yes.
Mrs. Schneiderfett?
Yes. The yeas have it, motion carried. Um, I seek a motion to approve the e-learning plan.
Move to approve the resolution for adopted e-learning program in lieu of the district's scheduled emergency days.
May I have a second?
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded, would the clerk please call the roll?
Johnsons, ready?
Yes.
Frank Panzico?
Yes.
Amy Faly?
Yes.
Mark Steen?
Yes.
Ellen Sternwiler?
Yes.
Darren Stone?
Yes.
Mrs. Schneiderfett?
Yes. The yeas have it, motion carried. Now we move to conference items, is there any old business?
Only thing I would mention is from the strategic plan, uh, readiness activities, we have been able to hold the first readiness activity, the second was truncated today, but we have, uh, scheduled remotely to finish those meetings later this week, and then we will be looking and are in the process of recruiting team members for that effort. I will say, we are supposed to launch in early April, and obviously those plans may be on hold or may be adjusted, but the board has been provided the dates for those events, uh, and will continue to keep everyone apprised, thankfully our CEC facilitator said there's all sorts of flexibility and understands that, um, if we need to push this effort back a month or two, we can certainly do that, if we want to just push pause and launch in August, that is perfectly acceptable as well, so we have all the flexibility we need in order to continue on this important endeavor for our district.
Uh, other old business? Any new business? Good and welfare?
Something, so I've been thinking about this theme of performance, I'll start with the lighter fare. Um, I have an eighth grade son who is not very forthcoming about his life, and I, I was overjoyed that the junior high decided to make a live stream video of him and others line dancing to a Spice Girls song available to me to watch, I've watched it a few times, my mom watched it, we loved it, and it was brilliant, because they would've died if the, you know, parents had shown up and watched it, but we were able to see it, um, live, so that was one performance that I really enjoyed and appreciated them giving us access to. The second was last weekend, I had the opportunity to go to the International Festival at Ramona, and not that my faith in humanity needs to be restored, but, um, watching the performances of those, um, children and representing their cultures was really something that would restore one's faith in humanity if, if you needed that, um, and I loved that our district got together and that they, people there were supporting each other's differences. Um, and then finally the e-learning, we started the meeting talking about this, I'm gonna finish the meeting talking about this, the performance of the faculty and staff and administrators in getting this thing rolling has been absolutely outstanding, I have been so impressed, my son and I queued up the video last night to see what he was supposed to do, and I think Mr. Rissis had a parting shot, "Have fun," at the end, and I thought, you know, what a way to model, you know, what this is gonna be, and they were positive and upbeat, and, um, that's exactly what this, what the kids need, and so I'm really glad for all the hard work that everybody's been doing, thank you.
Um, and I just wanna add to the students and the faculty and the parents who had things that they had really achieved-
things that they had really achieved and were working on and all the events that Dr. Kriemskoli had mentioned that have had to be canceled. You know, we share your sadness and it doesn't take away from the, what you've achieved and your accomplishments. And I'm hoping that somehow things can be rescheduled, made right, to the extent that that's, that's possible, but our hearts are with the D-39 community in all that, that you've lost.
One more quick one on the e-learning. Again, the, the work that's been done, not just in the last couple of weeks, but the fact that this was an initiative of the, of the district for, for a while, is paying off now. So two things. One, I'm sure you will, but learn as much as we can from this so it's even better when we need to use it again for hopefully just things like snow days. And two, just anecdotally, what we're doing is significantly better than what I've seen from Nutria. So if there's an opportunity somewhere down the line to, shall we say, help the rest of our community, I think there is room for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Others? Okay, then may I have a motion to adjourn?
Lisa?
Yeah.
Ms. John, so I, I wanted to make sure that the administration and, and the board are on the same page about any hourly workers that we have and what our plan is with respect to paying them during this unprecedented health emergency.
Yes, I can speak to that briefly. And that being the board, we discussed this at the Committee of the Whole meeting and the board was very clear that we wanted to ensure that all of our employees continued to be paid. It is in fact something that we have received support for also from a state level to continue those payments and we are deeply committed to ensuring that all employees, whether they're able to be in working or not, are, are continuing to be paid. We are working with our one contractual provider through North Shore to ensure even that our bus drivers, although they're not direct employees of our district, but certainly people who care for and support the work that we do. And so trying to make sure that everyone remains as whole as possible during this, again, unprecedented time. Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you.
Other things? Okay. May I have a motion to adjourn to executive session?
I move to adjourn to executive session to discuss student disciplinary case, cases 5, ILCS 122CD and minutes of meetings lawfully closed under the Open Meetings Act, whether for purposes of approval by the board of the minutes or semi-annual review of the minutes as mandated by Section 2.06.
May I have a second?
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded, would the clerk please call the roll?
Johnsons, ready?
Here.
Panzico?
Yes.
Amy Faly?
Yes.
Mark Steen?
Yes.
Ellen Sternwaller?
Yes.
Aaron Stone?
Yes.
Ms. Schneider, please.
Yes. Motion carried. We are now in executive session and the time is 8:40, 7:49.
So for the record, at this point, we will stop the recording. We will invite those not part of executive session to exit this room and we'll close the doors and move into executive session.